To trying to understand the communications of this along the way. And what needs to change for the next project so that if there's an overage, we know about it earlier to make a decision where our backs are not up against the wall. So I think it's a two part. I'm not diminishing the questions. Tonight, I mean, they're good questions. But I don't think for the this amount that I want to delay this for a few months. And weather wise, perhaps that takes it even into the spring. So I personally, I'll move ahead. But we're all supporting moving ahead, but also support trying to understand what happened in coming through public works. Some process change that it says this is what we do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. I'm largely worried of what the Vice Mayor just said. And it sounds to me frankly, like the I'm not sure that some of the issues that have been raised and again, what I think are good questions that that they're on the contractor here. It sounds like there was some. You know, I don't want to speculate or you know, some, some, some kind of lack of oversight, you know, there have been different reasons, but that that it really may be more on the city side. I think it's legitimate to try to take those learnings and make sure that that doesn't happen again and have a positive process going forward. So you know, would be supportive of that, but would vote to support just because I'm not sure that the issues are necessarily on verity in this case.
Thank you. Councilwoman Landry. You're muted. You're muted. And no, you, we didn't hear you.
Okay. My frustration is when Amy started to talk about what changed, she brought up the communication line. How much time was spent resolving the issue that we knew about prior to going out to bid? This issue was raised by me numerous times before we went out to bid. When I looked at what the answer to the question was, they spent a tremendous amount of time on the con line and it isn't in the memo. The roots are another issue. I do not buy that justification. The staff allowed us to continue on, did not rein it in, did not come back to us at an early date. And the contract for the consultant has a scope of service that they have to complete. And so by saying, oh, if we don't approve the money, staff's going to pick it up. The consultant has a scope of work they have to complete. They have to do record drawings. They have to finish some middles. So it's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. It's more the principle where I'm at right now. And we have $60,000 left in the contingency amount. There's not a whole lot of construction left. I cannot imagine we're going to have $60,000 of unforeseen conditions at this point. I went out and looked at it. You're almost done. So I'm, I'm going on principle at this point. I know I'm probably going to get overrode on my vote. But it's very frustrating to me that these projects keep going out. And the questions are not getting answered before we go out to bid. That con line was the issue of all along. And what I heard about change orders is there only is $4,000 of change orders right now. That there's no other change order cost for construction. And we're going to spend $60,000 for them to only have $4,000 in contractor costs. I don't, I'm, I'm just very upset about this because these issues were raised early on. And then the, you did not handle it during the process. You waited till the bitter end. And now you're basically saying, oh, it's going to be delayed another two months. Well, you should have come to us back earlier and told us stuff like this. Enough said.
So I think Vice Mayor Resnikov was first and then Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, the only background dispute that I'm going to just comment that I will, I will focus on finishing the project right now and getting that done. And dealing with what you call the principles, and I'm not using that the meaning anyway, deal with the principal issues afterwards. Because there's issues of what happened, why did it happen? How much was it? Communications, process, whatever it is. I don't think it's worth for the impact on the budget of not finishing this project on time for the city. So I think I'm going to stand with doing that and I'm happy to work along with others to deal with the root causes later.
Thank you. I think I had Councilmember Lopez next and then Councilmember Bybee.
Yeah, I agree with what was just said. I also just want to clarify and make sure we're all on the same page. If I'm understanding correctly, the bulk of the $60,000 is not coming from the change orders, but from the additional time. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep. That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all clear on that.
It's a, I would offer it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg. Additional time could be associated with change orders. Or it could be just the contract of the design consultant had to be in the field.
But, but we heard about a number of other delays due, I mean, and there in the staff report. So I, I don't dispute that, but, but it, you know, it doesn't seem to me like that's where the bulk of the issue was.
Councilmember Bybee.
I just wanted to say that I, I support Councilmember or Councilwoman Landry's comments. I understand the frustration, but to me, it's important to get the park done, the project done. And $60,000 on, you know, is a small amount of money in the grand scheme of the whole, of the whole project. But, but again, it's staff does need to be held accountable and needs to answer to, to, to what, what, you know, the actual, what actually occurred to get to this point. And I would support the money being used from the the budget adjustment. And then if there's excess money in the contingency, then, then it gets replenished up at the end of the project. Rather than using the contingency now to cover the cost.
Okay, thank you. I, I would just offer that. I'm not sure we know where the contingency money came from, from the grant or from the city. And if it's from the grant, it may not be utilizable for the consultant fee. Hard to tell because we don't know enough yet. I'll just offer that. I also think that under, that's why I asked, under a normal consultant services, if they're responsible for doing the as builds and other services under their contract, they would be obliged to complete that work. Whether they're out of money or not, they would be obliged to complete that work. So I share Councilwoman Landry's concern about principles, but I also share the Vice Mayor's comments that we need to get on with it. And I think we do have some significant lessons learned on policies and procedures of managing construction projects and budgets. And consultant services and change orders. So I, 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 I'm, we have to, we have to go forward, but I sort of feel like we're being put against the wall. Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion, but I don't remember. We go through the public hearing and all that. I just don't see.
I did, didn't I? I think I did.
Yes, Madam.
Thank you.
I just didn't remember.
Thank you for having the same kind of mental indigestion I have.
So go ahead or?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'll move then to the Council, adopt the resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to amend the consultant service agreement with Verted Design Inc. and authorizing the Finance Director to perform a budget adjustment for John D. Morgan Park Bud Avenue Side Improvement Project 18-P.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Resnikov, a second by Councilwoman, Councilmember Bybee. Bybee, and may we have a roll call vote, please?
But may I ask a good question?
Oh, I beg your pardon. Yes, you did have your hand raised.
I, I just want to make sure that the, I've heard pretty unanimous consent on looking into the issues. And so I just want to make sure that the procedurally, that that direction the staff is clear and I'm asking whether we have to have an additional motion or just.
I would ask the city manager what he feels he needs to follow up on staff's comment on council's comments.
I, I don't think an additional motion is necessary. I hear you and we've already engaged in evaluating our pre-bid process on this project to identify areas of improvement and we've done that.
This is not pre, this is not pre-bid. This is management throughout.
Yeah, but, but I think some of those improvements, including improvements at council members, we have every intent to try to implement.
Interest here in us understanding what happened and how it doesn't happen.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Resnikov, a second by Councilmember Bybee. And hopefully Councilmember Lopez has some confidence in that next step. And we will now have a roll call vote. Councilmember Bybee. Aye. Councilwoman Landry?
No.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons? Aye. That motion passes. And we will move on to item number 12. For those hearty souls that are here before 12:00 PM.
Good evening. I'm not sure if that's a lead in for me. With you here, Mayor, Councilmembers.
If I may, if I may, Community Development Director, I'm sorry. I am a little slow on the draw and my machine keeps saying stop. And there's an error. So I don't know. I was trying to read the motion, if I may, let me just read the item into the record. Okay. Item number 12 is authorize the city manager to dispense with the bidding procedure as specified in the Campbell Municipal Code, Section 3.20.050. And negotiate award and execute a contract with De novo Planning Group for the completion of the envisioned Campbell General Plan and Environmental Impact Report. And with Metropolitan Planning Group for the preparation of the 2023 to 2031 housing element and authorize a corresponding budget adjustment. This is a resolution and roll call. Now it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbons. I know, I know it's late in the hour. Again, Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, Robbie Stewart, Community Development Director, I'm here with you with Senior Planner Stephen Rose. Know it's late in the hour. We're going to try and keep these in broad strokes. You have a comprehensive report. I know you've read it. A lot of the presentation here reiterates that. So we're, I know we got a full PowerPoint, but I'm going to emphasize myself and Stephen to make it quick so we can get to your deliberations. Stephen, can you go ahead and advance the next slide? So tonight, as you mentioned, Mayor, we are seeking council direction on two scopes and bids that we have this. If you go down the last bullet, responds to your direction. From June 15, 2021, we had presented you options on how to reconcile completing the general plan and completing also a state mandated housing element. After considering those options, long deliberation, you might remember council direction was to synchronize both of those actions together. Move forward ideally with one consultant at that time, that was De novo. And come back to the council with the authorization, move forward with the contract. A bit of an update, we have talked to De novo. They are completely on board to complete the general plan, non-housing element portions. They are completely on board to complete the EIR. They do have bandwidth issues on completing the housing element. Hearing that a few weeks ago, again, we had advised that this item be deferred a week or two. That's why you're hearing it now. And we reached out to a second consultant, that's M Group. You might recognize it's a local planning firm, actually based in Campbell, had done the last housing element for Campbell. Asked that they would be interested in pairing with De novo to do the housing element portion. And they affirmatively responded yes. So we're glad to come to unite, I think with a package that speaks to the strengths of both consultants. The consultant that worked on the general plan has a depth in the IR that's De novo. And a consultant that's familiar with the housing element needs of Campbell is a local firm. Has a lot of energy and interest on what's a very important endeavor before us on having a housing element. And the work together in complementary with each other and with staff and, and moving this, this project forward. So in summary, we're asking for your authorization to execute the contracts. We're going to go a bit into detail, not too much because it's in the report on the funding and how this package comes together. Stephen will get into that. I will recognize before I do hand it off to Stephen that, well, we have one more slide. Stephen, could you advance one more? That there's a lot ahead on this. So, so number one tonight is, is with your blessing, we'd like to move forward with the contract. Two, keep in mind, we will have some key touch points ahead for the council. One is in September, having a big discussion session on the general plan. In October, having some study sessions in direction on the housing element. It is time critical that we get through these quickly and ideally by the end of the year to meet our timelines, to have a focus on the housing element that gives direction to complete the EIR. To meet our standardated, a state mandated requirement to have a housing element completed by the end of next year. Just in quick broad strokes, we have a lot of things moving that you might have questions on and how they relate to each other with the scope. I did want to say two things. One is you might remember the, the staff is working on what are called objective standards. And I know we had some questions upfront on how that relates to all this effort. We are continuing to work on those objective standards. They're mandated by the state to give clear standards to housing developers when they come in. Our, we're envisioning that work coming and being completed towards the end of the housing element. And those objective standards will be used to codify and create zoning that creates the capacity for housing. So I just wanted to kind of, I wanted to lay out how that work effort relates to this. Separately, as I said, much of the focus of this effort will be on housing. I know there has been some current concern issues, observations from the council on economic development. And of course, economic development planning very much relates to the general plan itself, how you plan for land uses, the type of businesses you want. Plan where they should be, develop your permit around that. As the city manager and I have, have looked at economic development and have consulted with the Economic Development Subcommittee of the council. We are proposing to start a new economic development planning process that will happen in parallel with the general plan update. And the idea is that that would happen separate and the results of that, which might result in land use changes would come in later after general plan adoption. So I know, I know it's a lot of balls moving at the same time. But we did want to give you some assurance on that staff has thought about how all these things are going to play with each other. What the main focus today is, is to get the contract moving on the general plan housing element. That will be the main focus, but these two related efforts, wanted to let the council know will be working in tandem related to this general plan update. So with that, I will hand it over to Senior Planner Stephen Rose. He'll walk you through the rest of the presentation.
And with that, thank you. I promise there aren't too many slides. I think we've got four or so left. And starting with the first, just captioning the scope of this project. So really to complete the housing element, the general plan and the associated environmental review, the scope anticipates up to six city council meetings, four planning commission meetings and three public workshops. Additionally, staff has recommended inclusion of an additional optional budget item, which would add three focus group meetings to discuss topics of interest with the public stakeholders and property owners. To borrow Rob's term, broad strokes, I would also mention from a public outreach and engagement perspective. Branding, we plan on advertising on the existing envisioned Campbell website, we'd be adding an additional page dedicated to the housing element update. And also the scope of work, it really in a big way, it factors in work that's being conducted by the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative, including the Let's Talk Housing Meeting, which will be occurring tomorrow night. As well as work that's being done by other groups like the, I believe the lawyers, he's working on affirm, furthering, affirmatively furthering fair housing policy development and the like. So in regard to budget, completion of the updates is anticipated around $808,000 inclusive of a $77,000 contingency fund and the three focus group meetings recommended by staff. As the De novo contract would supersede the existing general plan contract, which has $245,000 remaining. And the city would leverage grant funding made available for leap, made available through leap and reap. The additional cost to city for both updates would be $410,000. This expense would be covered by the drawdown of the remaining general plan update reserve balance and use of general plan maintenance fees through fiscal year 2023. So the, the product schedule, we, we mentioned it's kind of a critical schedule that we're at, that we're looking at, and it has been compressed to the extent possible to achieve adoption of the housing element prior to the January 15th, 2023 certification deadline. There are a few key milestones to ensure the project stays on schedule. Would start even as early as tonight by taking action on the staff's recommended by, by, by advancing the staff's recommended action. Next month, a dedicated meeting will be held on the general plan. And in October, housing element scoping meeting has been scheduled. Both of those meetings are, are being planned with the aim of preparing us for a critical milestone. Which is really finalizing the land use map and any policies requiring sequel analysis by the end of the year. As mentioned by Rob, I mean, we also have these other moving pieces, which include the objective standards update. And those will be ongoing on a parallel track with all of the other work we're doing on the general plan on the housing element. As well as any related ordinance work that will be required to adopt the general plan and the housing element. As a final point on the slide, I just wanted to mention that one of the key strategies that we'll be employing is that while there will be opportunities for further refinement of policies. That if there's any policies which are identified, which are going to require in-depth study or analysis. Our general approach would be recommending that those will be programmed to occur following the adoption of the general plan on the housing element. And with that said, staff's recommendation on this item is to take the, the action captured at the beginning of this meet, of this item. And that concludes Jeff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the content and the simplicity. And my computer has frozen, so I'm going to see if I can manage this without all my notes. Okay, time for questions of staff. Seeing no questions, I will open the public hearing. We have a public hearing opened. Do we have any speakers? I had one speaker sign up, Kalisha Webster, but I don't have her online with us at this moment. We, we outweighed her. Sorry about that. Kalissa, please feel free to contact staff or council members with your questions or concerns. All right, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Lopez.
I'll, I'll say after discussions with staff that I'm supportive of, of the process, I've been assured that there's that the, well, Rob, you know, maybe you can speak to this, but that it sounds like you have experience with these groups and I think that you'd be able to work positively with them. So I, and to manage on our end. So I certainly support that and I'll just want to tip my hat to you and to staff for the work and the, the presentation that's clearly done and looking at some of our previous concerns about timeline and updating that. I can really see where you've come back and revise what was there. So that gives me confidence in just overall process. So thank you.
Okay, I, you know, you would, Councilwoman Landry?
Yeah, I would like to just ditto what Councilmember Lopez said. You guys responded in a very quick and timely fashion. You had a great presentation. The report was very clear and I, I agree with your decision. So I just want to compliment you guys for hard work. Well done.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I would also agree that a lot was accomplished and I appreciate the jumping through hoops that it took to make this come together the way it needs to come together to move forward. So thank you both and staff for doing that. I would simply offer that I spent time with the Community Development Director and the city manager. Providing some perspective on where I was concerned about where all of this was going, particularly with the content and quality and consistency of the end product. So I appreciated the Community Development Director's response. It gave me confidence that he understood and valued the concerns that I had. Which I very much appreciate. So I'm, I'm very supportive of moving forward. Besides the fact we need to, I'm supportive of the approach that they're providing. I do have a few lingering concerns. So I look forward to the meeting in September. Where I think we're going to have to hash out some really, really tough decisions from the council. So I look forward to having a convivial and dynamic meeting to address and make sure we get both the general plan and subsequently the housing documents off on the right foot that we're all really excited about doing. I'm stressing a little bit on, on the shortness of time, but I think we can get there if we all are willing to step up and do it. So I thank staff for stepping up and doing it and council has got to join the parade. So with that, I would offer a request of motion from some council member.
I'll do it.
Councilmember Bybee?
So I moved that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to dispense with the bidding procedures specified in Campbell Municipal Code, Section 3.20.050. And negotiate award and execute a contract with De novo Planning Group for completion of the envisioned Campbell General Plan and Environmental Impact Report. And with Metropolitan Planning Group for the preparation of the 2023-2031 housing element and initiated budget adjustment to appropriate $563,618 for additional contract costs and to recognize grant revenue from the local early action planning, we, regional early action planning reap grant for $153,339 in fiscal year 2022.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Bybee and a second by Councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call, please? Yes, Councilmember Bybee? Aye. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov? Mayor Gibbons? Aye. Thank you very much for all of that. And I suppose you're saying good night and we still have stuff on our agenda. We have one, we have two more items. One, I believe that we need to do, which is item 13, which is approve the appointment to the Civic Improvement Commission and provide direction on planning commission term expirations. And who is going to lead that discussion?
I can tell. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
Councilmember Bybee, you're it.
I was just going to give an update on the Advisory Commission interview subcommittee meeting. So.
Thank you. If you have more, if you'd like to introduce it, that's fine. Go right ahead.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so Councilwoman Landry and I met last Friday as the Advisory Subcommittee to interview three applicants for the Civic Improvement Commission for three terms. There were actually four applicants, but only three, one was not available for the interview. So we interviewed three candidates. I must say they were all good candidates, very enthusiastic, enjoy living in camp. Very proud to live here and I think we'll, we both. very proud to live here, and I think we'll, we both agree that they'll both be, or all three will be great additions to the Civic Improvement Commission. So we would like to recommend the pull up their names. Jenna Nailer Nailer to serve a four-year term that expires in August of two thousand twenty-five. Reappoint Mary Ann Yoshikawa to a four-year term, also expires twelve thirty-one. I mean, sorry, eight thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, and then the third candidate was Heather Malcolm and appoint her to the shorter term, which expires in August of two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you very much. I believe we need to make a motion to accept that. It is recommended that the city council approve the recommendation of the Advisory Commission Appointment Interview Subcommittee regarding the appointments of the Civic Improvement Commissions and that one. And then I think there's a second motion that will talk about the Planning Commission, correct, Councilmember Bybee?
Yeah, so I'll I'll move that.
Next. Okay, so we have a proposal from Councilmember Bybee. Do we need a second on that one?
What did you say about the Planning Commission?
Not yet. We haven't done it yet.
Oh, I didn't know. Okay.
I'm just clarifying, it was two separate topics.
Getting too late. We had great candidates, very good interviews, very enthusiastic.
So do you second the recommendations of the committee?
Oh, yep.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Bybee, a second by Councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bybee?
I.
Councilwoman Landry?
I.
Councilmember Lopez?
I.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
I.
Mayor Gibbons?
I, thank you. And the second part of the recommendation, Councilmember Bybee?
I can help with this section. This is the Planning Commission. And so the Planning Commission at the end of this month will have three seats that are expiring. City's Clerk's Office opened the recruitment period, the the end of May, with a deadline of July thirtieth. At that time, one incumbent indicated they would like to be reappointed, but as of this meeting this evening, we've heard from one other incumbent who has confirmed that they would also like to be reappointed. And one is still on the fence. And the City Clerk's Office is recommending, and we did not receive any new applications to consider. So the staff is recommending the council allow those who are currently serving in their terms to continue to serve in that expired status until they are officially reappointed or replaced to avoid any quorum challenges for the Planning Commission. In addition, staff is recommending counsel that you direct the City Clerk's Office to reopen, open this application process until a sufficient number of applications have been received, at which time a special council meeting can be called to conduct the formal interview process. And that's it for the Planning Commission, so we just need you to allow us to reopen it and to work with these council members to be reappointed.
Thank you for that presentation and recommendation. Is there any comment? Questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Resnikov?
So we, it's 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 okay to let two or three, if three third ones, to just extend out non-reappointed? Is that correct?
They would be serving, they're expired technically, but they would be continuing to serve until we have formally replaced or reappointed them. So they're still technically in an expired term.
I remember asking that in an earlier time when we had a similar situation. I thought it wasn't allowed. That's why, that's why I was checking on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I I've got the same memory you do.
Yeah, I I thought they either had to be reappointed, like, for example, if somebody didn't want to stay another term, you reappoint them and then they resign from that term. But I wasn't aware we could have anybody whose terms expired stay. I I assume though that Bill has weighed in on this, I would assume so.
No.
See if he's still on the line with us.
Yeah, actually, actually, no, I I have not weighed in on that concept. I I I think it was my opinion the last time that we could not do that. And I I don't know of any reason really to change that. I I don't know of any authority that would allow you to extend. Well, I I mean, you could reappoint them and I I suppose you could have, you could reappoint them for less than a full term, but
Bill, I kind of remember when we had this, that when we had, say, one person want to be reappointed, we'd have others. We went and interviewed that person and decided to deal with the reappointments first. So we could, could we not go forward with the two or even three if we get the third? And if we don't fill it with them, then we go outside. I I thought that's what we we did before. And if somebody said, I'm willing to stay six months, but that's it, we could do a four-year term with the understanding, then they're going to leave.
Yeah, and you always have authority to terminate somebody earlier than their full term.
Okay, so we have at least two that want back. My suggestion would be we interview those two.
If if I may ask another question before we go there. The, at least one, if not two, of the people we're discussing did not submit in the timeframe allowed. So to me, it's problematic to reappoint them. Or am I being too fussy?
I think the council always has discretion to extend the application time.
Okay. Okay. So with that, Madam Clerk, what would you suggest we do?
Well, if council prefers, we can reopen the application period, allow those who want to be reappointed to submit updated applications to you, and we can set a special meeting for you to conduct the interviews for at least two. And then we can extend the application period till applications are sufficient, and then we can hold a second special meeting for an additional application whenever that is received.
And but that means some seats would be left vacant right now.
Maybe that would be correct, yes, and it's three of the seven seats, and so the quorum is four, so it, you know, it's challenging having those three vacancies until we can schedule that special meeting.
So we'll, we need to schedule it quickly. Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Yeah, just a suggestion, we maybe have a very short period of time, like one week. Ask the two incumbents to put in their applications if they're not in. And we ask the other incumbent, you decide yes or no within this period. And then as soon as we can, the following week or so, we interview two or three.
Why don't, and and we need to set the date.
We just set the dates, of course, but I'm suggesting if we reopen it, we reopen it for a very short period, somebody else could still apply. For one week, your applications, third person make your decision, and we get to interview minimum two, maybe three the following, trying to speed it up if we can. Four is a bad thing, right? Four, foreign commission is is hard.
Yeah, it's not good. Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't want to hold up Planning Commission unnecessarily.
Okay, so is that doable? Madam Clerk?
Yes, if that's how council prefers.
I would want to make sure Bill said it's okay.
Yeah, that that would work fine.
Okay. Are we done yet?
Thank you, Bill. I just wanted to get used to that tie. Dress up for us. And to bring you back at some point.
All right, I I I am willing to forego council reports. I'm, oh, Councilmember Bybee, you need something.
I just had one additional comment. I wanted to recognize the service of Carol Hoffman, who is leading the Civic Improvement Commission. She did reappointment.
I didn't realize that.
She served, I believe, at least two terms. Four-year term, so I just wanted to recognize her service as well.
Thank you to the incumbents that are reapplying, too.
Yes.
Yeah, so we need to be sure and recognize Carolyn, anyone else. Thank you for reminding us. Okay.
So let me make sure I understand what we're doing. We're doing a one-week extension to the application process.
No, we're reopening, we're reopening it.
Okay, we're reopening it for a week. That'll allow the two commissioners that want to stay to reapply. We're going to ask the third person, we close the application period, have interviews, and they're all appointed before September first. Paul, is that correct?
You're muted. You're muted.
The date you said, just, what was the date? You said something about September first.
Well, these guys expire August thirty-first. So they need to be reappointed by September.
You said, oh, open it for a week, get ever get at least those two or three in or more, and do a very quick interview. So we could theoretically be there by September one, or remember, their meeting is the second week. So really, we have an extra week in there to go till September, what, ninth or whatever it is.
And I'll and I'll work to try to fit it before their next meeting in September.
We have a little, we have about one extra week in mind, I think. Well, we have to appoint them at a council meeting, right? So we don't.
It will be a special council meeting, right?
Okay, so we don't have it.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, thank you.